Good evening, everyone. We're here for the Village Board meeting for Monday, June 6, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would everyone please remain standing for a moment of silence, please? On this day, 78 years ago, we had D-Day, and a lot of our troops and all the people involved, a lot of people passed away, so I'd like to have a moment of silence for all those people that fought for our freedom and not for our liberty. Thank you very much. We will have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, June 27, 2022. I apologize, I have to do a roll call first, I apologize. Trustee Alpert?
Present.
Trustee Soberman?
Present.
Trustee Corrigan? Ms. Corrigan had this long-planned trip with her family, well over a year now, and she did ask me to change the date, but I, with all the different things with Memorial Day and with next month, July 4th, we have to change the meeting. I chose to go ahead with this night, to have the meeting this night anyway, okay? And Trustee Soberman?
Present.
And Mayor Curley, present.
And Trustee Hagan's here, too.
Trustee Hagan.
Just letting them know.
Okay, upcoming meetings, we have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, June 27, 2022 at 7:00 p.m.
Oh, going all the way to August.
And we have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, August 2, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. All right? During the summer, they don't usually hold the workshops, we just go straight to the meetings. If anybody has any questions, always feel free to ask us during the month, or tonight even, huh? I'd like to have approval of a resolution, a motion for a resolution approving the April 25, 2002 Board of Trustees' Special Meeting Minute, also approval of the May 2, 2022 Board of Trustees' Meeting Minute, and a resolution approval of the May 16, 2002 Board of Trustees' Special Meeting Minute. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second made by Trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we are going to have a, it's at 7:05, it's now 7:08. We're going to have a public hearing on a local law, new section, Chapter 119, entitled "Demolition," which regulates the demolitions of buildings in the Village of Suffering. I asked Mr. Rice to help me with this one, write up a new law, a new fee schedule, because the fee schedule, right now, any building that gets knocked down, we get $250, huh?
What, $150, actually?
What? $150, actually, for the total fee, no matter how big that building is. We now incorporate it into the size of the building, anticipate how much work we have to done, how many times you have to, you know, inspect it, and a lot of things, so the numbers will, the number, it'll increase the fees to the Village of Suffering. So, if I could, any comments? I'm going to make a motion, open up a public hearing, please, in reference to that, please. Can I get a motion?
Motion?
Motion made by Trustee Hagan. Second, please?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Second by Trustee?
Fred Soberman.
Fred Soberman.
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Anyone in the public like to ask any questions or talk about it?
Jim Janitino, Two Memorial, "Have you worked out the fee schedule by square footage of the building that's going to be knocked down? What's the parameters, Terry?"
It's by square footage, Jim, okay? There's the initial fee, let me see, I got it in front of me?
It's $50 plus $100 per thousand square feet.
$100 per thousand square feet.
So for a hypothetical 3,000-square-foot single-family home, it'd be $350. Commercial buildings, which are more involved, obviously, depending on the square footage, the cost would increase. And the local law, presently, there's no regulation as far as what the Building Department shoulder needs to see on a demolition permit, so we've tightened it up considerably, there's a lot of information that's required. If it's inappropriate, because it's a very innocuous application, the Board of Trustees has the authority to vary or waive some of the requirements, so it's a flexible scheme to deal basically with whatever is going on, and to compensate the village for their expenses depending on the magnitude of the demolition.
Yeah, it's not only square footage, it's dangerous material and the like. That's just where the inspectors can be on site, or an appropriate inspector could be on site.
That's the intended law, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That does bring up a question, though, is if there are dangerous materials being handled, should that increase the fee for any inspections associated with dangerous materials?
There was actually, Steve, his language in there, that if there are special circumstances... There's two things dealing with emergency. If it's an emergency demolition, and you have a dangerous building, then the whole procedures don't apply, because we have another law that covers that. On the other hand, if you're dealing with a very unusual situation, the Building Department has the authority under this local law to assess additional fees with administrative appeal process if somebody thinks it's excessive.
What's been existing is a flat fee of $150. It doesn't matter if the building was 30,000 square feet, or is a two-family home in Suffering, huh? And the work involved in those different things is so much more extensive things to do, we just can't keep making the taxpayers pay to get where other people are trying to get things done, huh? So we can't keep on hitting the taxpayer. So that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to make it more equitable for the taxpayer in the Village of Suffering.
On board with that.
Any other comments? I hear no more comments. I can make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Trustee Soberman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I guess...
I also gave you a resolution, if you want to act on this tonight. Essentially, it just recites that the public hearing was duly and properly noticed for tonight, that the requirements of the municipal home rule law were complied with, that the Board of Trustees declares itself to be lead agency under the State of Environmental Quality Review Act, and it's a type-one, it's type-two action, which basically means it's not subject to seeker, and that you adopt the local law, adding Chapter 119, entitled "Demolition," to the Village Code.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
I make such a motion.
Fred Soberman, motion made by Fred Soberman. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah, but now I've got to do the fee schedule.
Yes, sir. Fire Chief, how we doing today?
What was that?
How we doing today?
We're doing okay.
Very good.
I honestly only have one item on the agenda that'll come up under the Treasurer's report, otherwise, everything's going pretty good, and that's about it, unless anybody has anything for me.
Okay, very good, okay. Ms. Janito, explain what's going on with that, okay?
Yep.
And where the funds are coming from for that one.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Chief.
You want to go back to me?
Yeah, go back to Terry. This has to do with the motion on the fee schedule, actually.
Yeah, I prepared a resolution for the Board to amend the fee schedule, as I just mentioned, so that a demolition permit, the fee is $50 plus $100 per thousand square feet. It's not on the agenda, so if you want to act on that, I would suggest that first you adopt the motion to amend the agenda, to put this item on the agenda.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to amend the agenda, to put the item for the fee schedule on the agenda. Can I get a motion to...
I make such a motion.
Fred Soberman makes the motion. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Steve Alpert. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And then if you are so inclined to motion to amend the fee schedule, to provide for the fee for a demolition permit to be $50 plus $100 per thousand square feet.
I have a motion to amend the fee schedule, as for Terry Rice.
A motion.
Motion made by Trustee Hagan. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Trustee Alpert. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Chief? Come on, please. Chief Lachlan, how we doing, sir? You're getting a lot of pictures lately, I notice, and a lot of social media around this village lately.
Very famous guy now.
You're pushing your face in there, very good.
Good evening, everyone. Not much to update you on, in the month of May, we responded to a little over 880 calls for service. This Friday, June 10, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., we have our next Dare Dance at the Community Center. Just like to thank Recreation and DPW for, you know, continuing help with those. Also, just to update you, we've begun receiving responses to our community survey. The feedback has been overwhelmingly positive, and we've gained some good insight into what concerns our residents and what direction they'd like to see the department go. If the Board is so inclined, I can generate a report and share that with all of you, that you'll be able to take a look at the survey and just, you know, see what people's responses are, I'm happy to do that if...
We'd like that, Chief, thank you, sir.
Mayor, are you doing a consent agenda tonight, or would you like me to go over my agenda item? It's the stop DWI phones?
Go ahead, go ahead and tell them about it first.
Okay, so, as most of you know that have been on the Board, Rockland County Stop DWI gives out money every year in the form of grants to municipal police departments for DWI and DWA enforcement. This year, they're offering us $5,000, and I would just ask that the Board pass a resolution. They need a resolution from the Board to accept, that the Board will accept those funds in order to enter into an intermunicipal agreement.
I'd like a motion to accept the $5,000 funds from the county of Rockland, Stop DWI, utilize for DWI patrols, and then through a contract with the county intermunicipal agreement. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Motion made by Trustee Alpert. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Made by Trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, what do you do with those funds, exactly, Chief?
So, those funds will be used to put additional DWI patrols on. Typically, we do it on, you know, busier nights, either Friday night, Saturday night, holiday nights, nights that our statistics show that DWI instances of DWI are higher, and those patrols are specifically out there to do DWI and DWA enforcement.
Right, and does the county other, come in that night with you and actually do the stops with you?
So, there's a couple of different things you could do, we can do our own, which typically we do. We've also in the past done kind of regional ones, where we'd either team up with the Roundpole Police Department, or the Maual Police Department set up checkpoints at the borders. The funds are ours to use, however, you know, we choose to do so, so if the Board is inclined, I'd be happy to reach out to the town of Roundpole or Maual Police Department and see if we could set up a, some kind of joint effort.
Whatever you think is the best to save this community is what I agree with on that, okay? Whatever you think is more effective and better use of time, huh?
Yep, absolutely.
Whatever you feel is... Can I just ask you another question?
Sure.
I recently spoke to Supervisor Speck, he had called me up in reference to all the local police departments getting together to do things with Connor School, Cherry Lane School, all these things, where there's training done together, so we don't make some of the mistakes they've made in other police departments. So, I just want, I'd like to know the Board's opinion, if they agree with this, that we work with other police departments to, which was done a little while back, but it hasn't been done recently, is that fair to say?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Supervisor Speck said he heard my Memorial Day speech, and that's why he said he wanted to push this, and I know you've already been in touch with Chief Riley, who's very helpful to us and stuff in here also, so, you know, just keep us informed to go ahead, you know. But this Board, I think I can speak for this Board, they will do anything to protect the children of this community and the residents' community. That is our top priority, okay, protecting the residents of our community.
Yep, we've been in touch with some other local police departments, Roundpole, Spring Valley, you know, the Sheriff's Department, because if some type of large-scale incident does happen, everybody's going to be responding.
Right.
So we've begun to set up some interdepartmental trainings, where we're training with each other's officers, so we're all on the same page, and we're sure everybody's, you know, fully prepared for the situation.
So when these drills are scheduled, if you can just inform this Board, in case anybody wants to go and view and watch, we'd appreciate that, Chief.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay? I appreciate your time, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Fred Rell, the grant program, show me the money, Fred.
I saw the new Top Gun movie, but show me the money.
I haven't seen that one.
So, good evening, Board. We received some good news today from Charles Zawicki and Joe Hunt, I guess he's not here, but the grant for the backhoe, we had received the backhoe, but we were waiting for the additional attachments, accessories to come in, and as you know, with supply chain issues and alike, that things are taking a long period of time, but they finally came in, so we can now pay that, and then we can seek the reimbursement of $125,000, so that was good news. The EFC has what's called an intended use plan, what you do is, you have, if you have a water project, you can put it on this plan, so they could help make a determination of how much money they could potentially be given, grants. And this has to do with the state revolving fund, and I'm working with Michael Janito, Charles Zawicki, and also Danielle Curtin, and it's due for our projects on June 17, which is next Friday. The PFOA project, which we received the grant of $319,000, that's the one where we're going to be removing the PFOAs from the drinking water system, reactivating the filtration system, so Michael, I, Charles, we had a meeting with the New York State Department of Health, since it involves drinking water, this grant is an EFC grant, but since it involves drinking water, you get the New York State Department of Health involved, and there's certain criteria that needs to be implemented as far as the bidding process and then implementation of the actual grant itself. So that went very well, and we're moving forward on that. And just the other thing is that there's several grants that just continually, you know, keeping the ball up in the air, we've been awarded the monies, but we're not ready to put the shovel in the ground yet. It's either due to some action needed to be done by the state or by the county, but we'll be moving along as soon as we're able to do so. That's it.
Sounds good, super.
Fred, just one thing, when I say "show me the money," it doesn't count, we give the old grant for the backhoe, I know about that already, that don't count, okay? So don't count that as one of your heroes, you already got credit for that.
I get it, but you're not going to get any money unless I...
Show me the money, Fred, get working them all on it, all right? Thank you, Fred, very much, Fred. Culture Recreation, Kathy, please.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Village Board. So tonight is the first night of yoga in the park, if you saw it when you came in the building tonight, it's a nice little crowd over there, so we're excited for that, Monday nights in June. The Taste of Suffering, Frank, I don't know if you're going to talk about it in a little bit, the Lions Club is going to be over at the Community Center tomorrow from 6:00 to 10:00. The Lions Club is doing that, it's going to be a nice event. We have Clifford Theater, so this stage will be busy very, very soon with Clifford Theater, the auditions. On my, on my agenda, I have the wrong date, it's actually June 13 and June 15 for auditions, so kids are going to come in here, audition for Clifford Theater. As of right now, we have 26 kids that have registered for Clifford Theater, and we have pool registration starting. This Saturday is going to be our first in-person, and then we're going to have online registration as soon as we get a few things cleared up, but we're getting, we're getting ready on that. We have swim lessons this year, we're going to have swim lessons again, we haven't done that for a couple of years, and registration for that is on June 22. And then our next big event is going to be the fishing derby over at Foxwood Pond. Registration that morning is at 9:30, we have fishing at 10:00, and then the Elks is going to be putting on a barbecue, and we've got prizes, so it's always a nice event over at Foxwood Pond. The pool is open on Saturday, June 25, at 11 o'clock, I'm inviting all the Board and the Department heads to attend and meet the lifeguards, meet the staff, before the pool opens for the season. And then over at the center on June 28, there will be elections, so the Community Center and Lealiden will be used for elections over at Lealiden. And I think that's it.
Any questions for Kathy? Anybody? Is that all good? I guess we're all good, Kathy, thank you, very good job Memorial Day.
Thank you, it was a very nice...
The DPW and everyone that helped out with it, okay?
You're welcome.
It was a complete success, people were happy.
Yeah, it was.
And, you know, I think I love the participation from the community.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks, everybody.
If I didn't say the police department, the police department also, okay? And of course, the fire department, fan favorite, I always call them the fan favorite, fire Now it's time for public comment. I'd like to open up, make a motion, open up a public comment, please. Have a motion, please?
Motion to open up?
Motion made by Frank Hagan, seconded by Steve Alpert.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Go ahead, motion passes. Anyone have any comments? Being the roar none, I have a motion to close the public comment period, please.
I make such a motion.
Motion by Fred Soberman, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Trustee Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Charles Zawicki, Department of Public Works, please. Good evening, Charles.
Which ones did you want me to talk about?
You know what, just, the other ones are all payments to different things, they're, you see them, everyone see on the board, it's payments to, they're all the Goshen projects, all right? So we all, we're all aware of that, all the different payments, so if you could scoot down to Charles, the authorized solicitation of formal bids for the roadway improvement Phase 12 project, all right? Want to talk about that? Okay, so...
You're going to have to hold a resolution, is that right?
Yeah.
You can do it any way you want, sure. Yeah, since you're not doing a consent agenda yet.
Go ahead, Charles, I'm sorry.
So, in the 2023 budget, we had a recommended roadway improvement project in the amount of, certain amount of money, which was like about $650,000, so we're going to, we have a list of roads, which we're going to review, and I've done estimates and measurements on them, and we're going to see how many of those roads we can get done with the amount of money that we have. So, that's the, that is the plan, as we've done in the past. Every year, we have come in and identified certain roadways that are in need of milling and paving. There is another project, that would be the 2022 right-of-way improvement project, so we've identified the roadways that we do plan on resurfacing and incorporating ADA ramps as required by the New York State Department of Transportation, and we are looking at replacing some of the Belgium-bought curbing on Park, on Parkside.
I have a question, Charles, I know I've asked in past years, that, you know, I've mentioned that Park Avenue is in sad shape, terrible shape, and every year, you tell me that there's ONR work yet to be done, ONR work yet to be done, where do we stand on the ONR work?
All right, so that's in regard to the ONR gas main replacements, so the permit that we've, are in the midst of finalizing with ONR right now is Cypress and Forest, so that work, you're telling me, probably will start towards the end of July, and then there's, sometime thereafter, and the timeframe always seems to slip with them from time to time, but Park Avenue and some of the other roadways in that area, they also have a gas main replacement. So, you mentioned Park Avenue, there is a good likelihood that the gas main replacement on Park would be done the latter part of this year, meaning that we would have an opportunity to pave that, say, next spring, summer timeframe.
Is there any reason that ONR has been, you know, negligent as far as the timeline? Because you mentioned this thing two years ago.
Yeah, I know if you're really negligent, just a matter of them scheduling their work, they have, obviously, they have work all over, not only at county, but in the region, so they, you're trying to, you know, get this work, they have to go out for bids, and so on and so forth. So it takes them some time, we do have meetings with them, we had a meeting only a couple weeks ago regarding the Forest and Cypress work, and we had some questions, we had some questions for them, and again, it looks like they're going to be starting that probably within the next month or five weeks.
So, as far as Cypress, there's a good chance that that might at least be repaved this year as well? Because I know that's in sad shape.
No, no, that would, I would say that what we, what we like to do with ONR, and we've had some success in the past, is to go into a cost-sharing agreement with them, and we always like to have some time for settlement and consolidation of the trench work, and typically, we like to wait a number of months before we go back and repave, so that, if work was done, let's say in July, and we only have a limited amount of funds this year, we have to work on agreeing with them, the likelihood will be sometime next year before that repave.
But this year, they're going to do the work and...
They're going to be doing the work, yeah, the ONR will be doing their work, I would say, probably within the next four or five weeks.
I sat down in a meeting with Charles and this one with them, and what happens is they, they do the work, it has to settle, and then they give us so much based on how much land that they, how much paving we have to do, so it's, it's a little negotiations back and forth, okay?
Where does it usually stand as far as cost? In other words, how much do they cover of the repaving?
Well, that comes to go, based on what damage they do to the road, they have, you know, there's formulas, they come and say, I mean, if they only do this much, they'll only give you that much of the road.
Yeah, we, what we've been trying to do is, obviously, when we issued a permit, we have a contingency in the permit identifying a minimum of what they would need to replace, so most recently, we've been incorporating in the permit one lane, so that'd be half the roadway. So, we're not particularly happy with that, but that's what we've been asking for.
Right, and Washington Avenue on Park Place also, you have Park Place and Washington Avenue, they're going to do, on Drive, they'll do more work, so you can't do anything. There are other roads we're working on now that seem the, what we call "worse" in the village.
Yeah.
Up by, you know, Parkside Drive, I think Claremont, uh, uh, Milford Lane, huh?
So... I've had, like, a lot of residents have contacted me... I've had, I've had, like, a lot of residents have contacted me, Cypress is one, and Park is the other.
Well, both of them, both of them are on the agenda, we're just, our hands are tied a little bit by them, you know, everyone hides behind a COVID word forever.
Yeah, one other thing we had, you know, in our meeting that we had in regards to Cypress and Forest, also had some discussion on, starting our discussion for the cost-sharing agreement three. So that involves Rockland Terrace, Lincoln, South Street, those, those, this is work that was done a short time ago. So we're working back and forth, trying to get there.
We always, we always go out, you know, to bid for the roadway improvements. Typically, Tilcon is the one that comes in, you know, it seems, from my experience over the last several years, it's been Tilcon for all of it. What would it take for the village to be able to do the work themselves and save, you know, obviously, there's a profit that Tilcon makes from doing it?
Really aren't equipped, you know, to do that, I mean, the re, we don't have the resources in terms of the equipment or...
But I mean, in other words, we spend $600,000, $700,000 every year on this. My question is, how much does the equipment cost, and how much does the work actually cost? And how much, let me finish, and how much of the cost that we're paying to Tilcon is profit for Tilcon that could be not spent so that the residents don't have such high taxes?
That's the short answer, we would not be able to do it.
Because, in other words, if we had enough people to do it, if we had the equipment to do it, what would the cost be? I'd like this to be researched.
Well, we wouldn't be able to do it, I'm telling you, we just wouldn't be able to do it.
No, what, Charles, no, we'll do, right now, we wouldn't be able to do it. And I agree with you, okay? What he's asking for, and then someday, we'll look and see, just to look into it, not to do it even, not even saying we're doing it, we're not, no commitment to do it, but I think it's, he's asked a reasonable question, how much would equipment cost? Like, what, would it cost us $3 million just to get, you know, the rollers, you know what I mean? Whatever.
Let me, let me put it this, let's say it's two employees, I'm just making up a random number, let's say it's two employees plus a half a million dollars in equipment. I, I don't know if that's the numbers, right? It may work out that the cost for us to do it over a 10-year period saves $5 million. I don't know, I'm just throwing numbers out, but it's, we're spending an awful lot of money.
The municipality does their own paving, so.
No, I, listen, I don't, I don't, I understand, I, I agree with Charles on that, right now, we wouldn't, if the village, if the board ever decided after finding out numbers, so I guess his only question is, would it be feasible someday? Is what his question is.
I'd like to know what, what it would cost.
Someday, we'll just look into it, Charles, all right?
I'd like to know what the equipment would cost, and I'd like to know what the manpower, how many people.
We couldn't do it this year, next year, yeah, I don't, I don't see it.
Right, I'm not saying this year, next year, I'm saying, you know, I, I'd like to have an educated position of what it costs.
I mean, you live in the village, have you seen when they're doing these projects? Tilcon, they, you know, they have truck after truck after...
Oh, there's a lot, a lot of employees.
I mean, it's enormous, it's enormous.
No, we'll do see, when they do the parking lot being, we'll watch it.
Yeah, yeah, watch it, and then...
I'm just doing, asking a simple question, so we'll just...
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Charles. Again, I don't, I don't, I don't think we're ready to do it now, so maybe we'll look at a couple of projects, the, and we'll see. Oh, Charles, I apologize, Charles, can you come back up? We had to do, and this is my fault, not your fault, I apologize to you. Letter L, Charles. Yeah, L and M, we have to, that's my fault, I jumped, okay? Let's do the change orders on those, okay?
Okay, so, yeah. Okay, so L, that's a change order for the backup power critical facilities project, and that's for Hush Electric Contracting. So we have two components there, was the repositioning of the generator, we had to move it off of the gas main, so we had to turn it 90 degrees and back it, back it up about 12 feet. And the other component to that was two battards that would be in front of the gas meter down at the DPW garage emergency generator, so that's the two components of that change order.
Very good.
Then the M is for Pingarant Deutsch, this is for the hardening of the water treatment plant project. So we have there is a number of things. So I knew we had, early on, we had some discussion about being a WIX project, and we have had to break it up into a general construction contract, electric contract, asbestos contract, we never got any bids from the asbestos contract. Goshier had recommended that the general contractor go out and solicit bids for that component of the asbestos. They came back very, very high, more than $400,000. So we end up putting together a site-specific job, site-specific project plan and a variance. The variance was to the State and New York Department of Labor to modify the technique on how to abate the building. So that was, that was a big part of it. There was another, another big part was that Pingaro and Deutsch had to put together plans and get, receive approval and have significant discussion with Rockland County Department of Health in regards to the shutdown during, for well number four, during the swing over from the new pump to the, from the old pump to new pump. That's the gist of, of the extra work, and so part of that in the asbestos abatement, there is, besides the site-specific project plan and the variance, there's third-party monitoring, so the air monitoring during the abating period, and that's, again, that's all included in this change order.
All right, Charles, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna do a couple of motions while you're standing up there, okay? Because then I'm gonna come back to something else, okay? Can I have a motion, please, authorizing change order number one to Hutch, Hutch Electrical Company for the backup power for the critical facilities project? Motion, please?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Motion made by trustee Albert, seconded, please?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Solomon, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item M, resolution authorizing change order number one to Pingaro and Deutsch for the hardening of water treatment plant project. I please have a motion, please?
I so move.
Move by trustee Solomon, seconded by...
Second.
Trustee Hagan, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Resolution authorizing solicitation of formal bids for the roadway improvement Phase 12 project, which includes various roads in the village, and we're still looking at some, based on when the bids come back, because we have, we have, we're putting in about $650,000 into this, some of it's from CHIPS money and grants, and some of it is not left over, you know, I think from last year, so it's, it'll be a $650,000, the whole project will come to about $650,000 or under. So authorizing solicitation, a motion to authorize solicitation of formal bids for the roadway improvement Phase 12 project.
Motion, Hagan.
Motion made by trustee Hagan, seconded, please?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Solomon, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, can I get a motion for resolution authorizing solicitation of formal bids for the 2022 right-of-way improvement project? That, that would be the, the curbing and the ADA ramps that would go along, on certain parts of it, and that, that's what that motion for. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Motion by trustee Albert, seconded, please?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Solomon, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now I'm gonna do a consent agenda from the items, and these are all payments for, for the Goshier project, all right? Items A through K for all payments. So can I have a motion for the consent agenda for resolutions A through K? Motion, please?
Motion.
Motion made by trustee Hagan, seconded, please? Seconded, made by trustee Solomon, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now I'm gonna go to a resolution accepting retirement of Larry Vogel, right? He was a, he's, he's actually a village resident, and he worked here for, for many years, and he, and he put in his retirement, and we wish him, you know, health and happiness in his new adventures. So can I get a motion accepting retirement of Larry Vogel, please?
I so move.
Motion made by trustee Solomon, seconded, please?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Resolution accepting the resignation of Gregory Traval. I think he's the one that went to South Carolina, right, to become a firefighter? That's correct. Yeah, he moved to South Carolina, he was a young, young gentleman there who, who went to, he wanted to be a firefighter, and he found a job down there, so that's why he, he moved on. Can I get a motion accepting the, can I get a motion, can I get a motion accepting the resignation of Gregory Traval?
Motion.
Motion made by trustee Hagan, seconded by trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert. Solomon.
Solomon, okay, you changed the name.
North Carolina.
North Carolina, okay. Same difference. Same difference, he left beautiful suffering. And now we have, we have a, two, because of those two left, we hired two new people to keep the staffing at the same level there. So I wanna make a motion for appointment of Joseph Sessa as, as laborer. Motion, please?
Motion.
Motion made by trustee Albert, seconded, please?
Seconded by trustee Solomon.
Seconded by trustee Solomon. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Can I have another resolution? I have a motion for the appointment of Jamie L. Mann II as laborer.
Motion.
Motion made by trustee Hagan, seconded by trustee Solomon, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I think you are done there, Charles, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Charles. Treasurer, Mr. Genito, please.
Yes, good evening, board, mayor. We have several resolutions for the treasurer's office. The first one is authorizing closure of various capital projects, and this is where we come to the era, we find certain projects have been completed, and so we need the authorization to close them. I wish to make one amendment to that resolution, and that is project 2020-008, the fire truck. If you would strike that from the resolution, then we'll keep the others on. We have some additional costs coming in on that project. For all the others, we ask that you adopt that resolution as an amendment.
So I'll make a motion first to strike that from the record. I'll make a motion first to strike the, the resolution in reference to the fire truck. I can motion, please?
I'll make that motion, Frank Hagan.
Motion made by trustee Hagan, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Solomon, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now I'll make a, you, you want anything else to say? You wanna keep talking, Mike, or? Just make a motion for the rest, or you wanna explain anything else?
Well, I'd like to explain, Chief Coffer had mentioned that one of the items I was going to cover, and actually, there's another one for the police as well.
Okay.
So this first one is using ARPA 21 money to purchase record management software that's required for the fire department. This is actually required mandatory for filing things like their LoSAP program information. So the amount is $32,600. We're asking that we use available ARPA funds to finance that project. Just to, I had a meeting, we've had a meeting looking into the program with Mr. Genito, with the fire department, and what we have now, the program we have now is actually a firefighter put it together first years ago. And he's really the only one that knows how to use it, it's not modern day, huh? So we're getting modern day, the firefighters will probably, you could, you probably could even improve response with this, with the, with the communication level, that's better. And especially after 9/11, a lot of fire departments learned about who's where, about location, and tracking people better. So it'll track them as they go into the firehouse better, am I, am I correct there, Chief Coffer? So it, it, it's just better for, for safety of the firefighters, not just as a, as a communication thing, but tracking things, knowing who's there, information quicker. So I'm, I'm totally behind this, as I'm sure this board is. So I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the project for the, for the fire department.
I so move.
Motion made by trustee Solomon, seconded, please?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is to establish a project for the purchase of three police vehicles. One of the vehicles has been financed in the general fund and through the budget. The other vehicle, we're, as we had discussed last year with the board, using ARPA 21 funds for that second vehicle, and for the third vehicle, since a lot of the activity involves the canine unit and the DARE operations, the police chief has recommended utilizing the DARE funds for that third vehicle. So this is establishing the project and those three sources of financing. So no debt will be issued for this project.
Oh, great.
I wanted to, Mike, I wanted to bring the, I wanted to explain it a little bit more, a little bit more extensively. What happened was when we were doing budget discussions, myself and treasurer Genito here, we had realized there was a lot of money also in the, in the DARE fund. So myself and Mr. Genito thought of maybe we should see if the, the police department will be willing to use some of those DARE funds to buy a police car, because they said they needed one for, for Thor the dog, the canine dog, all right? And, and as we're learning with all these school mishaps and all these things, we, I need, we need our police presence there more and more to protect our children. So we're actually using money that has had, been raised by, by our police department, but really our community. So we're using community funds to buy a police car, huh? And that's what we're doing, we're buying a, a dog, a car for, for Thor, and to, to protect our community. So as, and as Mike and Mr. Genito mentioned, other funds are coming from the federal government, so we, we're doing pretty good to not cause the taxpayer money and those things. So the dog just wants to come up the stage here, all right? Do you want to get a picture?
We don't have to shake his hand, do we? Do we have to shake his hand?
Wanna come up and sit some up?
Okay.
Give me his, give me his paw. Here, my, my, ready by this, we pay for a police, for a police car, we're all going to taxpayers, because all of our work together, all of our care together, right? This money is a race race, so Thor's gonna be in the car, is it? Thor's gonna be in the car, if you want, if you want. And also, and also, we, we actually make sure Thor and Thor's is all physical, okay? I wanna thank the DARE fund and the police department for working on, working with us on this to save the taxpayer money. Thank you, all right? If you buy Thor tree, I'll pay you back later, okay? He's very good tonight, all right?
Mayor, the next resolution is to establish the road improvement Phase 12 project. The approx, the estimated cost of the project is $700,000. Approximately $76,000 will be coming from the road improvement Phase 11 projects, money that has not been spent or encumbered. The money other than that will be CHIPS money, PAVE New York money, and EWR, that's extreme weather money, that's coming from state aid, and what we'll need is $409,000 in debt to finance the remainder of the project.
Can I have a motion to establish the project 2023-002 Road Improvement Phase 12 Project?
Motion, trustee Albert.
Motion made by trustee Albert?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Solomon, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. I wanted to back up to the last, I need a motion to establish the 2023-001 2023 police cars. Can I please have a motion for that, please?
Motion.
Motion made by trustee Hagan, seconded by trustee Solomon, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, the next resolution is a bond resolution to finance the $409,000 of the road improvement Phase 12 project. The bond resolution was prepared by our bond council. It requires an affirmative vote of at least four members of the village board, and it has to be a roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Can I have a motion for, for the bonding for the road improvement projects?
I make such a motion.
Motion made by trustee Solomon, seconded, please?
Seconded.
Second.
Second made by trustee Hagan. Um, all in favor, now, all in favor, I, I would do a roll call. Uh, trustee Hagan, you vote yes?
Yes.
Trustee Solomon?
Yes.
Trustee Albert?
Yes.
And Mayor Curly, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The next one is a, establishing capital project, um, 2023-003, which is the parking lot improvements is predominantly, these are going to be the two firehouse parking lots to be repaved. Uh, the approximate cost of the project is $210,000, and we would finance this project with debt.
Uh, can I have a motion for the bonding for the parking lots for the, for the firehouse? Uh, firehouses, if you, if you go through those parking lots, you'll see that there's holes and, it's dangerous. So, when a firefighter goes there in an emergency situation, his, his mind just like, let me just go there, let's see who I can help, let's see who I can save. You know, their, their mind's not taking every careful step. So you have to make it as safe as you can for when they make those steps out of the car, even into that firehouse. So, can I please have a roll call vote?
This is for the project. This is for the capital project itself.
Yes. Can I have a motion for the capital project, please?
Trustee Salvon.
Motion made by trustee Solomon, second, please?
Second, trustee Albert.
Second by trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next is a bond resolution, again, uh, developed by our bond council, in the amount of $210,000 to finance the project for the parking lots. Again, it requires a roll call vote, and affirmative, uh, votes from four of the village board members.
I'd like to have a motion, oh no, I'd like a roll call vote for the, for the bonding for the parking lots. Trustee Hagan?
Yes.
Yes? Trustee Solomon?
Trustee Salvon, yes.
Trustee Albert?
Yes.
And Mayor Curly votes yes. Motion carries. Is that it, Mr. Genino?
Aye.
Think that's it, unless I have, uh, oh no, yeah, that's it, Mayor. Thank you, sir. Thank you very good, good job, Mr. Genino.
Two more.
What about the appointment of Samantha Re- Reema?
Next. That's not yet. That's not yet, we're coming up. Okay, I have a resolution authorizing Mayor Curly, then me, myself, to sign a consulting agreement with Frederick J. Rela, AKA Show Me The Money Man, for grant application services effective June 1st, '22 through May 31st, 2023. Can I please have a motion to that, please?
Motion.
Motion made by trustee Albert?
I guess. I don't know who came first.
Second made by trustee Hagan. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have a resolution now, uh, resolution to appoint Samantha Reema as a part-time clerk. The reason we are doing this is that I discovered that our, our parking authority is lacking. So I looked into, uh, I, I got the, uh, Joanne, who deals with Department of Personnel, I need some help there to organize it and to, uh, maybe even computerize a little bit, so it's easier to understand, and it's just not, it's just, it's just in bad shape. It's in real bad shape. Uh, like, I'll, I'll point out, if you, if, if you get a merchant spot, there, there are certain businesses taking so many spots down there, we are like running, there's no parking in the B lot anymore, because they went against it. If you ju, if you wanna, if you are a merchant, uh, and I'm talking about someone, there's, there's three businesses that are taking over 40 spots each. There's only 178 spots, that counts no other businesses in the village. And you know what they pay per day? I guess you know, and could, the only people that I told recently, to park in that lot, they pay 27 cents a day. But yet our taxpayers are paying over 400 grand a day now. So I have concerns, huh? I have concerns, it's not run right, and, and I need help to organize it so I can better understand it, huh? Um, and that's what I'm doing, I'm bringing a part-time, a part-time person for a couple of months to help me, and then, uh, it's a school help, uh, program, they, they, uh, they, they work as a, just a summer for a couple of months. So I'm making a motion to appoint Samantha Reema as a part-time clerk to help me straighten out the parking authority. Can I get a motion, please?
I make such a motion.
Motion made by trustee Solomon, can I get a second, please?
Second by Hagan.
Second made by trustee Hagan, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's Miss Reema sitting there, I didn't recognize her until, it took me a while. Beginning, I thought she was a troublemaker to complain at the meeting. But I realize she wasn't, so. I, I just wanna say, uh, again, Memorial Day was a, was a, was a great ceremony, it shows the, the, the character of this community, and I thank everyone who assisted with us, with, with those events, and, uh, and, uh, hopefully have a safe summer, huh? And, uh, I wish everyone a, a good summer, huh? So, um, any, that's it for me, the trustees, are there any comments they'd like to make?
I do, let Steve go first.
I would like to say that Kathy and Nancy Christopher make a beautiful, um, presentation on the, on the web, announcing everything every week. Just beautiful, including the Memorial Day parade. Just beautiful. You're welcome.
I have something that does not involve the village at all, but it's something I want to encourage the public to do on the federal level. Um, a lot of people may not know, but it's, to me, something, uh, near and dear. I happen to be in the process, as I'm getting on in my year, my own years, selling some things that I don't need anymore, out of my garage, whatever, you know, and it's a little bit here, a little bit there. But a new federal law that took effect this past year, uh, stipulates that anyone who sells more than $600 worth of stuff, whatever it may be, is going to get a 1099K form. Now, the way federal law works is you don't pay tax on the gross profit of what you sell, you pay tax on the net profit, meaning, meaning, uh, it takes into account the cost basis of whatever you're selling. But in the case of things that have been accumulated over decades and decades of people's lives, I'm not just talking about me, I'm talking about Americans in general, uh, it's very obvious that people aren't gonna have receipts for what they purchased 20 years ago. And therefore, most people are just gonna end up paying tax, because the 1099 form is gonna list the gross amount they collected, not the net value of that. And I think that that law is a foolish law that was snuck, it was snuck in, actually, without any debate on the federal level. So I'm encouraging the residents of Suffolk, if they're so inclined, to contact their congressman, Mondaire Jones, and their New York, and, sorry, and the United States senators, uh, as well, Chuck Schumer and, um, and, uh, Kirsten Gillibrand, took me a second there, sorry, uh, to see if, uh, this law should be changed, because it's, uh, very onerous on residents, I think, that are cleaning home, cleaning their homes. Cause I think in most cases, people are selling things at a loss, not a gain, but yet they potentially face income taxes based on those sales now, on this new law. That's all, that's my soapbox for the day.
Very good.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Hagan?
I wanna mention that tomorrow night, if you're community-minded, you might wanna come to the, uh, Community Center on Washington Avenue, we're doing Taste of Suffolk. We have about 10 or 12 restaurants that, uh, will bring their food there, you'll pay a small fee to get in, and you'll get to taste all this wonderful stuff. And they'll have raffles, and they'll have, uh, giveaways, gift certificates, so between 6:00 and 10:00 tomorrow night, it's a good deal, we've done it for about six or seven years. If you have the time, come on over to the Community Center. The Lions Club is sponsoring it, by the way, and the village is allowing us to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, we always like good, uh, community events like that. I, myself, will be there serving, representing Curly's Corner, and, um, whatever other restaurants are there, and, uh, we let everybody taste it or whatever, and I think you have a DJ there also, don't you, Frank?
Yep, don't have a DJ.
Right, so it's like a wild party, Frank's does wild parties, just everyone knows, okay? So, uh, I guess we're done with that. Uh, we have, uh, does anyone need to go to an executive session for anything?
I don't know.
Anyone need to go to an executive session?
No.
Okay. So then I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting, have a motion, please?
I so move.
Motion made by trustee Solomon, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Have a nice day, everyone.